We call the regular meeting of the Quincy School Committee to order. Could you all please stand? I did it with honor that I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could you all please remain standing? Dr. Christopher.
Thank you. Now please keep in mind the families of Arthur Rizzi. Arthur was a custodian at mostly Sterling Middle School for over fifty years, and I'm thinking about his family, as well as Joe Mazzarella, who was the director of the Center of Technical Education for about twelve years, and Bob McGillicuddy, twenty-three years in the school system, a teacher or coach at Sterling Middle School, coaching swim teams at both high schools. Thank you.
Superintendent, please call the roll.
Mr. Bogoli, present. Mr. Demichis, present. Mrs. Hughley, present. Ms. Isola, present. Mrs. Lebo, present. Mrs. Mahoney, present. And Mayor Koch, present.
Motion to approve the regular meetings, minute meetings for January twenty-fifth. Motion approved by Mr. Demichis, seconded by Mrs. Hughley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the executive session meetings. Motion approved by Mr. Demichis and seconded by Mrs. Hughley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to open forum. This is an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than four minutes of the school committee. Any individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Does anyone present who would like to speak at open forum, see? Seeing none, this portion of the meeting is closed. Moving on to superintendent's report. Dr. Christopher.
Aged by popular demand, inspired. Also want to thank Owen Doherty for being here, and again, I think by next year I should be, he'll be a call.
Come over here, remember. I have here with me two interns working with the Quincy Nutrition Department, and they're helping us with a farm-to-school grant, which we are doing some taste testing with the elementary schools. Today, we are serving the apple maple yogurt with apple dippers. The children have an opportunity to taste it, tell us what they think, and also let us know if they want to see it on the menu.
To try and get the kids excited about nutrition, we're telling them a little bit about the nutrition facts in apples and Greek yogurt. So we have a little paper handed out to give them, and one of the things in apples is vitamin C. So we have listed vitamin C and tell them that it helps them prevent getting cold so that they can go throughout the winter without getting sick. And for Greek yogurt, one of the things listed is that it's high in protein, so it helps build strong muscles, so they can run around at recess and feel strong the entire time. And along with those handouts, we have a handout of the recipe if they like it, and surveys, so that we can find out if they actually liked the recipe or not. The purpose of the program is to try to expose kids to new vegetables and get them to eat healthier.
When I tasted it, something in my body was like, yes! I loved it. It looked like milk, because it was like water in a cup. So after when I tried it, it was so good, and I liked it a lot.
I thought it was like sweet, it had really good taste to it, and I honestly like loved it to death. Like, I would like do anything just to get more.
We added some really nice healthy options to our menu, one being the grab-and-go cold lunch option. So if the child doesn't like the hot meal on that day, they have the opportunity to eat a yogurt, a bagel, some fresh carrots, and a cheese stick, accompanied with their milk and a fruit. So we're really trying to engage all the children, have them find something that maybe they haven't tried before, and also help children with allergies find a meal that works for their diet. The purpose of having these slices in the kitchen is, we found that children are more likely to eat their fruit if it's sliced for them. If we hand them a whole apple, they're more than likely going to throw it away, but we found that there's less food waste if it's already sliced for them. So with a little bit of extra touch in the kitchen, the kids have an opportunity to eat their fruit and enjoy it. But Franney, why do you enjoy working here at Quincy Public Schools in the past?
It's the children. They make me smile in the morning, they say, "Good morning, Miss Fran," and they look forward to coming in, having breakfast, and having lunch, and we talk. And they're really, really nice kids, and I have a good time with them.
At some elementary schools across Quincy, the nurses get involved in the tasting as well. They call the food service office and ask for a certain fruit or vegetable, and they introduce it to the children during lunch. And we highly encourage that and allow the nurses to contact us at any point to get some fruit and vegetable options. This is slightly different. We are actually given money by the USDA through the farm-to-school grant to purchase food items and also purchase equipment that could help us better serve the students.
It's a fun class. I mean, like, you get to learn how to save a life, and who knows when you'll need it in the future, so you should, you know, go to the class.
I would tell them that it's really important to take it, because it's like something you need to know in life, it will just help a lot of people out.
Can you speak for the children of the 18 years? Is everybody still here? Okay, I'm gonna hear you. Let's read this one. What does it say? The fibulation is... So where's the A and B? We can't hear you. Where's the A and B? First of all, we'll have to help process.
Like, the more important concern I do today is the signs of somebody, because it's like going on some random person who doesn't need help would make you look like someone like crazy, but we'll also, if we know the signs of somebody who needs CPR, that allows us to help them.
I'm a babysitter, and I'd like to know how to help if my baby that I'm sitting is choking or not breathing.
Hi, Chris. So, Chris, what are some things that baby mister is not? Anything you can find, round. Who's got a leg I set up on the floor?
Then my five chest goes, three, four, five. The exact amount to support the head. I'm gonna turn the baby over, making sure that it still has a heavy tuck into my body, making sure that it still has where I can work the baby, and I'm gonna make a funny go. I'm gonna do five back fours.
If you don't know CPR, then it's a lifeblood stake, so you have to learn that they can, you know, save the person's life or keep them, keep her blood circulating until the ambulance comes here, so it gives them a better chance of survival.
Who can save a life? I can!
Thank you. Mike, thank you, Brian. At your places, you have the grant booklet of the year, and you can take a look at that at your leisure, and if you have any questions, you can call Mr. Mulaney or call me, and I'll be glad to answer those questions. Reminder of kindergarten registration on March, on March seventh at all our schools, and we'll make sure we keep sending that out to many constituencies as possible. Statement of interest for the Parker School and North Quincy Roof. Paul Heinz from Public Buildings addressed the city council on Monday night after working with the mayor and the mayor's office. So the city council passed both the Parker and North Quincy statement of interest to start that process for next year. So we're glad to continue the great partnership with Mayor Koch, of course, but also Public Buildings and the Quincy City Council. Doesn't look like we'll have the student council leadership summit tomorrow, but the invitation's there, so we'll certainly, Mr. Sagala will send out a rescheduled date for that tremendous event, as you did see on our matter of heart, another incredible success, you know, as far as how many of our grade eight kids were involved in it, and again, on Saturday at Central, one hundred and eighteen parents and students were a great thing for them to be fully certified. And now Rita Bailey is doing, is taking a look at both high schools, to take a look at those students that were certified in grade eight, to get them to be recertified in grade ten. So it's something, actually, that came from this committee. I wish I could take full credit for it, I can't, but, you know, the committee thought it was something that we should look into, so I want to make sure it's something that can be institutionalized. I want to thank Brewster Ambulance for everything they have done for us in this regard, Rita Bailey, our nurses, health educators, physical educators, as well as our principals and assistants, to do a tremendous job. But it's something that you all should be proud of, and we're proud of as well. I want to bring Keith up. Sagala, I talked about grants, he's been busy. Now with grants, it's going to be nice enough this first.
Superintendent, do you hear me, everyone? I please report that Quincy Public Schools recently received two competitive grant awards. The first grant award, in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, is a Massachusetts Skills Capital Grant funded by the Governor's Office and the Executive Office of Education. These funds were created to incentivize and enhance high schools, vocational schools, and community colleges to support occupations demanded by today's industries. The grant provides funds for the purchase and installation of equipment to support vocational and technical training. This grant will support Quincy Public Schools' efforts to increase career and technical education programs. This fall, a new information technology program will be established at North Quincy High School. Grant funds will provide the following IT equipment: twenty-five Dell computers, five IMAX, three printers, servers, racks, and routers, a Surface Pro tablet, an interactive whiteboard, a Schlipro projector, a document camera, furniture, computer tables and chairs to fully equip the classroom shop, and three years of technical support with Cisco Network Academy. The second grant award, also in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, is a CTE Partnership Implementation Grant funded by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The goal of this grant is to increase access to career vocational technical education programs for underserved students, specifically students who are economically and socially disadvantaged, speak a different language, or have social, emotional disabilities. Grant funds will provide stipends for staff, including a program facilitator, a school to career coach, a partnership liaison, five mentors, and an OSHA officer. In addition, seven Surface Pro tablets will be purchased. Thank you Mayor Koch for your continued support in helping us from the city grant writer, and we certainly appreciate your support on that. It also gives me a pleasure to share with you two new community business partners. First is Mass Day Credit Union, who today became the newest gold-level sponsor of the Quincy School Community Partnership. We're also very excited that Mass Day wants to actively participate in our high schools' personal finance and accounting classes, as well as play a major role at our annual Credit for Life Theater on March twenty-third. Our second new partner, Granite Telecommunications, is the newest platinum-level sponsor of the Quincy School Community Partnership. We're excited that Granite Telecommunications will provide, are you ready? Will provide fifteen thousand dollars a year for the next twenty years, totaling three hundred thousand dollars to Quincy Public Schools, so we're so appreciative of that. These funds will continue to support teacher mini-grants, technology, the arts, as well as our annual partnership events and initiatives. Once again, thank you Mayor Koch for including Quincy Public Schools in the TIF, the tax-incentive financing negotiated among City of Quincy and Granite Telecommunications. Certainly, our students, our staff, and our schools will benefit immensely, so we're grateful for your continued support and leadership. Thank you.
Want to mention Parent Academies. On March ninth, March twenty-third, and April seventh, we'll continue to share those details with you, all about learning to read for parents, to talk about, listen to the developmental process of reading in the early stages of child development through elementary school, that's on March ninth, on March twenty-third, a continuation, part two. Talking about and discussing why some children really struggle with reading, with reading process, and what are those signs that indicate that your son or daughter is struggling. So, and then the third pot is April sixth, and that has a lot to do with dyslexia, and that's a continuation of what Erin has priority, KUPAC has priority, and the school committee had a priority for last year, so it's a continuation of that. So Erin, are those all at Central, or... Well, thank you very much, and we'll let you know as we go, more detail, and dates. I'd like to call Beth Halid up at this point. You just have remarkable programs, the All-City programs, choral, and the All-City band programs as well, and then some student ones. Beth?
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start by announcing some Quincy Public Schools' student achievements in both music and art at the middle and high school levels. In music, we have seven Quincy Public Schools' choral students that were accepted to participate in the Massachusetts Music Educators Association's Eastern Junior District Festival for students in grades seven through nine, and that's held on March third and fourth at Lincoln-Sudbury High School. So I'd like to congratulate the following. We have a, from Atlantic Middle School, we have a seventh grader, Murbessa Fomini. Central Middle School, two seventh graders, Rebecca Morris and Eliza Van Dyke, as well as two eighth graders, Hannah Murphy and Jessica Zisk. And then at Quincy High School, we have two ninth graders, Amanda Morris and Ashlyn Mannan. In fine arts, we have two North Quincy High School students that have been recognized in the Boston Globe Scholastic Art Awards this year. Twelfth grader Alexander Cox was recognized for art, and twelfth grader Kyun Wu was recognized for both art and photography. And Kyun was also, also won a Gold Key, which means that her work will be exhibited in a regional showcase at the Boston Museum of Fine Arts in March, and her artwork will go on to compete against other students' work from other states. So congratulations to them. I'm also proud to tell you about our brand-new All-City Chorus Program for fifth graders, which we began piloting in January of this year. There are currently sixty-one students across the district participating in the program, representing all of Quincy's elementary schools, under the direction of Diane Doherty and Ted Vangelisa, two general music teachers in our program. The All-City Chorus students are learning some challenging choral music, including two-part and partner songs. They're also learning how to blend their voices as part of a larger ensemble. We've had close to a hundred percent attendance in the short time that we've been running the programs, and the kids, the kids seem to really enjoy this opportunity to sing together, make new friends with other fifth graders across the city. There will also be a culminating concert scheduled for the evening of May second, so we would love to invite all of you to come and enjoy the vocal talents of our All-City Fifth Grade Chorus. In addition, I want to provide and save the date for another fantastic choral music event, our Second Annual All-City Choral Festival for middle and high school students. In a few weeks, we will be holding a student workshop on Tuesday, February twenty-eighth, for vocal groups from each middle and high school, amounting to over three hundred students, and a performance on Thursday, March second, at seven PM at Central Middle School. It is pretty impressive to see over three hundred students singing together as one ensemble on the stage, and we would love to have you join us. I also want to thank the newly-created Quincy Choral Boosters Group. They have been very supportive as their group builds capacity, and they're stepping up their fundraising efforts and events to provide funding for future choral events, assistance with private voice lessons, and they're looking into a possible choral camp for elementary and middle schoolers to occur during April vacation week. They will be holding a big fundraising event, a mattress sale, that will be at Atlantic Middle School on Sunday, March twelfth, from ten AM to five PM. So if you need a mattress, please come and buy a mattress and support the Quincy Choral Boosters. Shifting from vocal to instrumental music, I'm also very pleased to give you some updates with our All-City Band Program for elementary band students. Over the past few years, we have seen terrific growth in this program. Currently, there are approximately a hundred and six fourth and fifth grade students participating in the All-City Band, and they represent all of Quincy's elementary schools. Within the All-City Band Program, we also have a percussion ensemble, which has only been in existence for the last two years, and it has grown to thirty-one percussion students. Percussion was reintroduced to the band program in twenty-fourteen, fifteen, so we're very lucky to have a great group of students working on their skills. Our elementary band directors, Caitlin Schmidt, Matt Kavanaugh, Chuck Wilson, and Joe Salgucci, do an outstanding job organizing and co-directing successful program. And we are all looking forward to the culminating concert that will take place in early June, to which you are all invited. We'll get you the date as soon as days confirmed. So I'd also like to take a moment to thank the Quincy Band Boosters, who have been incredibly supportive to our K-12 instrumental program in the Quincy Public Schools. Their fundraising efforts have provided scholarship opportunities for students wanting private lessons and summer camps. They have funded the purchase of some large instruments and percussion equipment at our schools, and they have been instrumental in procuring substantial grants to support our marching program. So I have one final special announcement. A few days ago, Dr. Christopher, Lori Hayford, who's the president of the Quincy Band Boosters, and I met with Mayor Koch to discuss the successful growth and expansion of our high school marching band program, and I'm pleased to share with you that the mayor will provide funding for new marching band uniforms for the Quincy, North Quincy. The parents, high school principals, band directors, students, SLT, everyone is so excited and absolutely thrilled about this, and I'm sure that the band students will, no doubt, wear their uniforms with great pride. Sincere thanks, Mr. Mayor, for your generosity and continued support to the Quincy Public Schools' music program.
And lastly, you have program newsletters in front of you, the Food Services from Saturday before, we met at the Health Subcommittee the other day, and she's doing a tremendous job, as well as the Squadron Student Council newsletter, and Community Service as well from Carrie Ginty and Maggie McCall, so we'll thank them all for communicating such a fine effort. So with that, thank you very much.
Under old business, first item on the agenda is the two thousand seventeen eighteen school year calendar, which is scheduled for a vote. You have it before you, the committee subcommittee. Looking for a vote for... First approved by Mayor Koch, seconded by Mrs. Hughley. Dr. Christopher, please call the roll.
Mr. Bogoli?
Yes.
Mr. Demichis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughley?
Yes.
Ms. Isola?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch.
Yes. And also on the agenda, the two thousand seventeen eighteen school committee meeting calendar. Approved by Mayor Koch. Seconded by Mrs. Hughley. Superintendent, please call the roll.
Mr. Bogoli?
Yes.
Mr. Demichis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughley?
Yes.
Ms. Isola?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Koch?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
We're under new business. Dr. Christopher, present challenges and opportunities for...
Oh, good sack. I'll give him so far. Very talented, I understand. Mike?
Oh, good evening, everyone, and again, we'd like to be able to share with you as much information as possible about facilities. We did a little bit at the January eighteen Facilities Subcommittee, and then we said to you that we'd come back at the February eighth meeting and share with you everything in more detail. So same introduction as we've done before, to take a look at space and program considerations, as well as looking at boundaries, school boundaries, and it's something the school committee is interested in, to make sure we, as much as possible, keep our neighborhood schools together, but if not, we have the ability to do other plans as we go. So again, the purpose, to talk about your open enrollment policy, our class guidelines, special education placements, look at, things that we prepare for our budget next year. A lot of this information will help us really take a look at enrollment trends, enrollment in space, as well as space contemplation. So just to kick off, we, to look at the last ten years, to take a look at the trends in enrollment. And again, this is not an exact science, as you'll see, as we, as I go further, you'll see that there's always ups and downs, and that kindergarten registration truly drives the bus in so many ways, beginning with our elementary schools. So this is something we shared with you before, and taken way back when, in two thousand six, actually, we started full vacay, eight thousand nine sixty-nine, and then where we are right now, in ninety-four, forty-two. We added, you know, some biographs, just to give you a better picture, a quicker picture, to see the enrollment changes, the enrollment shifts in Quincy Public Schools. So this was our enrollment back to two thousand six, and then looking at how we climbed so far up to two thousand thirteen, where there happens to be a bump in just about every slide that we show, is two thousand twelve, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and then coming back down again in two, by two thousand fifteen, and increasing, again, not significantly in two thousand sixteen, but it looks like it's maybe rising again. So again, we'll talk about that as we go further. Put the full-day kindergarten in here as well, to show you in a biograph, the ups and downs of our kindergarten registration process and the full-day kindergarten. I mean, the goodness, the real goodness is that this year, you know, seven hundred and eighty-eight of our, almost our youngest, we have pre-K as well, you know, have a free, full kindergarten, full-day kindergarten experience, you know, and I think that's something our city should be very, very proud of, is, you know, obviously, the city, the school committee, and his honor. So think about that all the time, and what a great benefit that is, and so many other cities and towns do not have it and wish they did. So let's look at the current enrollment in general education, again, just as we look at all of our students, that's a hundred and two increase, and there are certain schools that have increased, and we'll talk about those, and talk about some concerns we may have. Overall, a hundred and two students is not significant over all of our schools and all of our classrooms, but there are certain, certainly things that we need to be aware of, the red, the yellow, and the green, which Laura put in there for us. We take a look at the yellow, the red, which means that there are some of our concern to us, we need to really take a look at those schools and the trends of enrollment, as well as class size. The yellow has some growth, some growth within the schools that we can allow for, and the green has decent space, significant space, that if indeed we ever wanted to use... right now, and how many students. Aaron shared this with you at QPAC, with special education pathways, which will be invaluable as we go into the budget, and take a look at where our programs are, and making sure that those pathways are the best for our students and our staff and families. Student placements, outside placements, you know, our children with real need, need to leave our school system. We wanted to have you have that information as well, and the categories. You can see that the autistic strand, you know, our care strand increases a bit, as well as the other is emotional, that appears to decline a little bit, but another concern for us as we go forward. When we look at, this was something we are very interested in, to take a look at how many of our students attend, that living Quincy attend schools elsewhere. So this is something that we gather, that other schools call us, that eventually state, as I believe, but we get this, we have this chart that shares with you, with the public, how many of our students leave the school system and go elsewhere to be schooled, so the names are, the schools are all there. We provided to the right, you know, how many private elementary students, 492, and it goes through, also mentions our child or school placements as well. And also a pie chart there that shares with you that 90% of the children, adolescents and young adults that are in our school system, 90% are here in Quincy State, in Quincy, with about 10% leaving for schools elsewhere. Let's take a look at the elementary enrollment. Again, the trend from '07 to '16, and overall, when you look at 77 student increase, it's really not that significant. But when you look at the individual schools, where the increase is, you know, that's where that draws our concern, and say, okay, let's take a look at what? The enrollment, the trend, and also the class size. So when you look at this, as far as the K-5 elementary school, you look at those red schools, and we'll talk about them when I profile them individually. But you can look at, most of our schools are not significantly trending upward at all. But if they are, these are schools that we have to really take a look at. Offered this biograph, just to show you the enrollment, if indeed we have specialized programs, special programs in these schools, you know, what kind of numbers of students are in those schools. Just a different way to share with you enrollment, or general ed, and special education. The class size information, the elementary class size is nothing less than extraordinary part, because we plan it that way in the budget, you know, and we also get funding for that, of course, from the mayor, and also your planning as well. What happens sometimes is that we have students that move, and so some of these classes that have much lower class sizes, two things. Number one, we have to look at that next year when we plan our budget and staffing, number one, still to keep the class size low. The other thing is what our teachers are doing, and what our principals are doing, when those class sizes drop, as much as they had at four or five spots, they use their staff very differently. So they look at specialized areas of ELA, of literacy, they take a look at mathematics, they take a look at science, and they reschedule, and they do some really very, very creative scheduling, in order that we use those teachers and not have one class of a very low number, and that's where they stay all day. They're using so much of our professional development to make sure that we use this in a creative way. So it's really, it's something that I think our principals, our teachers are really taking advantage of. But again, from a perspective of when we create our budget for next year, we need to look at the staffing, to make sure that the class sizes are low, as low as we can be, but also, we may need those at middle school, in the immediate position of high school. So we need to look at the whole system as we look at class size. The building site profiles, each profile that we've made is the red, the yellow, and the green. And again, we did those red and yellow and green primarily, probably two or three years ago, because we wanted to let families know that certain schools were not schools that we have opened, you know, those who remain neighborhood, there's not really a chance for open enrollment, except for siblings. And as we go, you know, year to year, there are far less siblings coming in to the school. So we'll show you that, but that's what that, that's really the red, yellow, and green, that's what we did to share with families very early on, because as you know, people were wondering in June, would I get into the school or not? Most people know now, very early on, that they need to make other plans, or go to their neighborhood school, which really is what we want anyway. So Delacquesa, we're looking at next year, taking a look at the, there's a wood-for-room if you're visiting, a little challenge on, which I know you all have. There's a wood-for room that initially was planned, when Superintendent Creighton planned that building, he wanted to make it wood-for, that they had a place to meet and do things. Well, that's, it has waned a bit as far as the usage of that building. So we've talked to the city council, certainly talked to Mayor Koch and Brian Amuuchi. So we're looking at that area being a care's classroom, because our autistic population has expanded, so that's what we're planning on right now, and I'll let you know where that goes, and what the design may be for that area. So we're growing, certainly at Delacquesa. San Luis Obispo, San Luis Obispo is growing. Our pre-K program is unbelievable, and the new models that we have, that Aaron has worked with the teachers there, has really created, parents are really enjoying choosing what model they want for their pre-K child. So now we'll look at Appleman House, very comfortable, class size, again, one of those situations that happened at grade four, we met the parents, we talked about what kinds of things could we do for our kids in grade four, five, specializing in math, so parents are thrilled with it, which means we may continue that for next year. We're meeting with those parents early in May to talk with them a lot, but it really looks good. And the Appleman House school is yellow, which means it's got room to grow. And if you look at the bar chart lower, you can see where they were in 2016, you know, and really, if you have, look at the total enrollment now with the 269, and you take away that those 55 specialized program youngsters, it's pretty much the same as where it was way back when. So, but it has moved and grown. And this summer, 2017, working with buildings and the MSBA, of course, they'll have a new boiler come in, and as you know, they've also had their 100th celebration a few years ago. Beechwood Middle Elementary, again, you know, that, this is a school that, when we look at the enrollment trends, it had that increase in 2012, 2013, and then came down the last two years, it's been pretty stable. But what we're looking at is the kindergarten at Beechwood, you know, and really hoping that we go back down to 55 or 60, which would be wonderful. If not, as we go, we're fine for September, but beyond that, we'd be talking, if we get a pretty decent-sized kindergarten, we'll be talking about some options that we may have to discuss for Beechwood. So as you can see, the four classes at K, hoping that it goes down to three classes, and we feel better about where we are with Beechwood. But Beechwood this summer will have a significant amount of construction going on with roof and windows and doors, EDA renovations, as well as a boiler. So there'll be a lot of action down there, and we'll make sure, especially with that we work with the landscape when it's all over, and make sure it looks as beautiful as we want it to be, we want it to be. So Beechwood is red, and continues to be red. Class sizes are still, you know, I think, very, very good, which is a great thing. We want to keep them there as we go forward. Bernzani, again, you take a look at stability, consistency of enrollment, in that this is really exactly what we like to see, this, you know, kind of flat line, almost, increases or decreases in enrollment. So again, the reason why it's red is because we want people to understand that we, that right now, with the class size where they are, with three classes of each, we really don't want to add to Bernzani within open enrollment. So again, eventually, down the road, if indeed we had issues in Montclair, we have issues at Lincoln Hancock, then we need to do things differently. Bernzani may be a way to help in that regard. Lincoln Hancock continues to go up and down, but grow, in the sense of, they're at, right now, in 2016, they're at a very similar level that they were in '07, '08. They have one class TK there of eight children. If we wanted to move that class, we certainly could, and we may look into that, but this workroom, as you know her, doesn't want to give up anything, especially her kids, kids in the city, so we'll keep talking with Aaron and talking to Ruth about that program. But right now, as you look at five classes of K-2 to 3, you know, all have five classes. Now you have four classes leaving in grade four, you know? So now, you know, the question is, do we have room for space for five classes of each? And the answer is yes. The other thing, looking at here, is that bump that we've talked about that's going to Sterling, the new Sterling, eventually. So we're very well-equipped, as you look at kindergarten classes of 106 and 108, and look at 234 of 90 to 90-plus, you know, we're going to have a very healthy enrollment at Sterling in a brand-new school, so we're really looking forward to that. So again, in 2015, they had the MSBA, they have windows, new doors at that school. But Lincoln continues to grow, and we'll keep an eye on space there as we go forward, and hope that that kindergarten class stays right where it is, which we find in the class size, we'll always take a look at. Lincoln Marshall, just, it's a flat line the past four years, and we are so thankful for that. You can see such increases from, we look at '06 and '07, and then the big bump in '08, and then after that, it just kept picking off. So it's about 100 students more, you know, at Marshall than there was at 2006. Again, when we take a look at Marshall, when we look at the kindergarten, you can see what bump that is of 126, and from K-1, I mean, from 1 is 98, and then you go 120, 113, 102. Again, plenty of room at Point, end of the road at Point, you know, very, very good class size there, and staffing there, and space there, excuse me. But you, it's same situation as we talked about at Lincoln Hancock. What's happening is you have a 4th grade that's leaving, going to Point, that has five classes, every other class, there are six of each at every grade. So another question is, do we have room for that sixth class, and for grade four? And the answer is yes, we do. But do we take a look at Marshall, and take a look at the specialized programs that are there, the two programs that are there, and by the pathways, you know, special education pathways, do we look for another home for those classes, which would give them, Marshall, even more, even more space? But Marshall is a concern, I hope it stays exactly where it is with kindergarten registration, and we'll be letting you know of that. Merrimont School, very much like Bernzani, consistent, a couple more ups and downs in the 2012, 2013, but very, very good class size, red, because we're not going to be looking at open enrollment for that school, and I think the siblings pretty much have run out. So Merrimont, very, very consistent, class size is excellent, and again, busy. When you look at 2015, the MSBA with windows and doors, 2016 with new roof, and also this summer, we'll be having a new, getting a boiler. So a lot of work done on Bernzani, but again, space considerations, in very, very good shape. We would not want to see four of a few classes here, because then it would be very difficult. But I think that looking at kindergarten registration will give us a great indication where we go in our mouth. Montclair, again, when you look at 2006 to where we are now in 2016, considerable increase, so we're consistently taking a look at that. And we did do some renovations there three, four years ago, and it proved to be the right move, doing some great things in there. So, because a lot of these schools, you know, they also have, such as the regular general ed classes, they also have library support, which we love, and we're going to keep, and we thank you for that, but also EL programs, some have more EL programs than others. They all have literacy, they all have special education. So there are these classes, other than the gen ed classes, general ed classes, that we have to be aware of, because, you know, when I first started in the school system, basically, you know, general education classes, we didn't have all these wonderful other programs for children, you know? So now we have to be aware of all these other programs, as well as the general education classes, so that's some of the considerations we go. So Montclair has significant EL classes, they also have the specialist, they also have the literacy, they also have the library support. So we're blending all of that and making sure, as it is right now, that we have very, very good class size, what we'd like to see is that we have less kindergarten coming in. That would be a wonderful thing, to go back to three classes there, would be great for that, for that school. So Montclair, I think, if indeed Montclair needs support in any way, as I get to Wallaston, you can see, maybe Wallaston would be able to help them out, Montclair, as well as could be, Bernzani may be able to help them out. So no, there are, there are things we can do, but we'd like to keep that as neighborhood school as possible. Paca Elementary School, again, pretty stable. There's only one, there's one specialized program in there of nine, a learning center class of nine. Interestingly enough, that this school is one of the highest of the over 20 new students, basically, 29, 25, 26, it's one of those lines. And we actually dropped a kindergarten in that school. So these students, the new students came in, they came in in grades one through five. Again, what's predictable, not that, you know? So we eliminated the kindergarten, so there's only 44, right thing to do. But new students came in, and they were in grades one, two, three, four, and five, which is a good, is a good thing. So we'll keep an eye on kindergarten registration. Again, with the MSBA, windows and doors in 2015, and we look forward next summer, the summer after, with a new roof at Paca Elementary. San Haba, again, one of those, you know, the classes, the class sizes is excellent, one to five, those general education classes, they have seven specialized programs, five cares, and two LDC. So if you look at, looking at those specialized programs and the enrollment there of over 60, San Haba really goes back to, you know, the 2006, '07, and '08, that 220, 230 tops. So there's room there for, for growth at San Haba. Squonam is a school that, the class sizes are not very good, they're extraordinary, and really is because of students moving out. And it's usually groups of students, like one grade may lose four or five students, and that's why the class size there in a couple of those grades are very, very, very good. But again, you know, our principal, our teachers use creative scheduling to make sure that they reach so many more students in such a positive way. So it's great, but we'll take a look at Squonam as budget, as we look at class size next year, we may have to tighten that up a wee bit. What else was Squonam? And obviously, we're looking to refresh, MSBA refresh our state of interest for a new Squonam school as we go. Wallaston Elementary School, again, yellow, becoming a bit more consistent, with three classes of each, very, very, very good class size, of 331 students total. Looking at MSBA in 2015... Squanum is a school that, the class sizes are not very, very extraordinary, and really is because of students moving out. And it's usually groups of students, like one grade may lose four or five students, and that's why the class size there in a couple of those grades are very, very, very good. But again, you know, our principal, our teachers use creative scheduling to make sure that they reach so many more students in such a positive way. So it's great, but we'll take a look at Squanum as budget, as we look at class size for next year, we may have to tighten that up a wee bit. What else was Squanum? And obviously, we were looking to refresh, MSBA refreshed our state of interest for a new Squanum school as we go. Wallston Elementary School, again, yellow, becoming a bit more consistent with three classes of each, very, very, very big class size of 331 students total. Looking at MSBA in 2015, windows and doors, and then this summer, a new boiler at the Wallston School. Again, really phenomenal facility improvements at so many of our schools. But Wallston, again, may be able to help out Montclair if there are issues beyond where we are right now at Montclair, so we keep that in mind as well, excuse me. The MSBA projects summary, again, to take a look at this for your information, but again, shows an incredible partnership that we have, the city of Quincy has, for the MSBA, with the MSBA, and the summer of 2017 is going to be very, very busy in so many of our schools. And again, Squanum, the statement of interest is, we're working on that, that will be submitted before April, to keep our place for a new Squanum school as we come forward. Open enrollment, done in two ways, looking, taking a look at kindergarten first, and then looking at grade one to five. This is the kindergarten here, and you can see, you know, if you look at 2016, and focus on 16 only, you can see where the Bernzani, those, the 13 students that came in kindergarten in Bernzani, you know, seven or eight of them were siblings coming in, the others helped a little bit with Montclair kindergarten, to keep the numbers down at Montclair. Same with Wallston, the next biggest, and we got to kindergarten, open enrollment, that again, was two things, siblings, and also helping out Montclair with some students coming to Wallston. So the grade one to five, we look at, you know, when we talk about like Bernzani, and we say, like, a 24 request for Bernzani and none granted, that means there are no siblings, you know, we just simply said no. And that's why that red indication designation really helps families say, you know what, I can apply, but most likely I'm not going to get into that school that I applied for. But Lincoln Hancock and Clifford Marshall, they're not necessarily for Marshall, and Lincoln Hancock, they're more for Sterling and Point Webster, so those shouldn't be focused. They're grade five students that go to those schools. So that's something that I wanted to clarify. Marymount, you can tell what we're doing with Marymount, 19 requests, zero. So there are no siblings as well at Marymount, so it's become truly a neighborhood school. And then Montclair requests, so you can see the zeros, and you can see where the kindergarten is the place where the children, that parents want to start their children, which we know is great, but they also some reapply for grade one, to see if there's a chance they get a grade one. How about middle school, sorry? Mayor would like to go on?
Before you want to, can I jump in then? Just a question on elementary. I know that I talked publicly some time ago, and we continued the negotiations for the potential purchase of the St. Mary's site in West Quincy, at which time I indicated that that could be a potential for a new elementary school. And I know that a lot of steps to that, including this committee, including the council, and perhaps perhaps the SBA. But should we move forward with that? How would, obviously, it grants a new elementary school, a neighborhood elementary school for that part of our city, which is a void right now, but how would it help the other buildings? I mean, how, numbers wise and space wise?
Yeah, considerable, I think, because when we look at that area, it used to be, at one time in the Willard School, was there a Bridgette Bryant? Was there, I think those are the neighborhoods that, you know, would be very, very helped, you know, in that area would help, really Lincoln Hancock, it would also help Montclair, it would also keep Bernzani very stable. So those, those kind of closed areas, that would work out greatly. And the other piece is that, if indeed, you know, that took place, you'd look at Lincoln Hancock to be kind of lessened in enrollment, you could also look at Marshall, you know, taking some of Lincoln, Lincoln Hancock taking some of Marshall students as well, so lessened in Marshall. So I think, I think that whole area of the city will benefit from a new school there.
Thank you.
Yeah, because a lot of what we do, we take a look at those former areas, the former neighborhoods, you know, like the Hantay, you know, you look at those, oh, there is former areas, and I think it helps us judge what we may be able to do and what we may not be able to do. That would be something that would help that area very, very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
I know it's preliminary, but do we know, I mean, I, this is, it's always great to talk about those sorts of things, do we know square footage of that building is and the space of that building, and what size building potentially? Do we know the MSBA has requirements for, you know, if we are, if we were, we haven't purchased it, but those types of things, we'd like to take consideration into that area. I mean, we are limited by spaces that you might be potentially interested in purchasing, but it's also something that we could be able to easily find out, but creating what size building potentially, school size, we could go into over there. Green space is something that they, correct me if I'm wrong, on the MSBA has requirements for certain types of elements when it comes to educational facilities? You know, what they were doing at Central Middle School, we use their, across the way is part of our green space. I believe at St. Mary's School, there's not a lot of green space. I think that is a requirement, you put it in, of course, but then there's also, I'm just curious if that, that's something that we're putting out there as a potential, but before we get too far down the road, I just was wondering if there was any assessments to come for that? I was curious.
Well, positive negotiations right now is over the size of, you know, land we would purchase. It would be the intention, obviously, to, sorry, those St. Mary's folks out there, might have found a school there, but that school would be demolished, and it'd be a new school that would be placed there. There are guidelines by the SBA, and there's also guidelines in suburban districts where there isn't the amount of land below suburban areas have. So it's still preliminary, and we get to that time, we can have those discussions, we have a better understanding where the lines will be, because the, I'm not to get into the details of negotiation, but the, the parish is still determining where those lines ought to be related to the cemetery, and the operation of the cemetery, separate from the school part, so we're still working on those items. But once we have that understanding, I think we can take a run at it, do some preliminary numbers all around.
So we would do those preliminary numbers before, you sound like negotiating a price for something that you're going to purchase, and then you'll determine whether or not it would meet the requirements of something that the whole thing builds, or the opposite?
No, we'll be doing some, once we understand what the numbers, the boundaries are in square footage, we'll do some calculations in-house before the final.